By asking Vice Chair Ritchie for the pledge of allegiance.
Absolutely, thank you. Please stand and join me if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Up next, we invite Tracy Hansen, our city recorder, to talk with us about the 2023 municipal general election.
Good evening, Board of Canvassers. We are coming to the close of the election season, and with that, the general election-
Is your mic on? I can't really hear.
Says it's on.
Oh yeah, no, sorry, no, it might just be me, I'm losing my-
I'm usually so loud, but I get up here and I get nervous. The general election was held on November 21st. In accordance with state law, the Board of Canvassers shall meet. The Board of Canvassers consists of the municipal legislative body and the mayor. They're charged with declaring the candidate with the highest number of votes as elected and certifying the vote totals for each candidate. The city recorder is required to prepare a report that contains the total number of votes cast, the name of each candidate who appears on the ballot, each office that appeared on the ballot, and the number of votes for each candidate from each voting precinct, the total number of votes given to each candidate, the number of ballots that were rejected, and a statement certifying that the information contained in the report is accurate. And then the recorder and the Board of Canvassers shall sign that report. So on the screen, we have the total number of registered voters, 32,000. We had almost 37% voter turnout, which I'm still always so disappointed in, but that's actually pretty good. And then for each office, as you see, Ben Nadolsky is elected mayor. For City Council at Large Seat C, Sean Myers is elected. City Council District 2, Richard Hire elected. And City Council District 4, Dave Graff elected. At the bottom, a little bit more, is the summary of ballots that were returned and counted, was 11,904. Returned but not counted was 194, which is about 1.6%, and actually, good average for us. 68 were returned past the deadline. 101 signatures did not match the voter record. 15 were returned unsigned. Five had empty envelopes, so their people submitted their envelope but didn't put their ballot in it. And then five were signed by someone other than the voter. All these people are given opportunity. We have contact information. If we have an email address, they're emailed, they're called, and a letter is sent to them telling them what is necessary to remedy the situation so their vote can be counted. There are eight provisional ballots cast, and all eight were counted. If you have any questions, I would have to answer them. Otherwise, I would request that you certify the results.
Any questions?
Chair, I kind of do-
I just know, it's been in code as long as I've been with the city, so 20 years. And we partner with the county. We have a contract with them, they work for us. And so you're still the body over that contract.
What would cause one of us to-
If you had concerns, if there were complaints that hadn't been resolved, you are welcome to go to the county, to observe the counting, to participate in that and see that process. So if you had done that and felt something was not on board or not okay, then as the Board of Canvassers, you'd have the right to question that, ask for clarification, to see if processes need to be changed or fixed. The results specifically by the districts are located here, so you can see those numbers. But they have the counting equipment, is really what it comes down to. As we don't, the cities can't afford to do that, so. Yeah. Certainly, like I said, the county has an open house, usually right about the right about the time of filing period, where you can go and see the county. There's some videos online that show what their accounting process is. And like I said, you have the right to be there, to observe, to examine the returns. If that was a concern, we could go there and hold the meeting there to actually see the counting process, that type of thing, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, and I highly recommend that I've done that once for the full tour of seeing how the whole process is done and everything, and then in an election that I wasn't participating, and I just helped to, you know, begin the process, not actually process them, but just to begin it. It's really a fascinating process.
Yeah, there's lots to it. We also participate in the audit afterwards. So when we're finished, all the recorders from the different cities go. When we work each other's election, we count and audit. And that's just a process that's done afterwards, just to make sure things are accurate, see if there's any other questions that people had or things that we need to change process-wise.
One question that was brought up is that there is a video record of each drop box.
Yes.
But a complaint was given to me, and I don't, I can't even remember who told me, but they says, "There's no way to audit that video footage."
It is if you go through the state. The state has the right to have that footage. It doesn't, grandma doesn't apply, the records request law doesn't apply to that. They have a right to request, so if a citizen had a complaint, if you had a complaint, you would go to the state. They would request that footage then, and then they would do that investigation and that examination.
I see, okay, thank you.
That's a good point, yeah, because people may want to know how to do that. Any other questions or comments?
I don't have a question, but just a comment to Tracy and her staff. I know their title says recorder and city recorder, but I think anyone that spends one election knows they're also election consultants and coaches. That elections and filing everything on time is sometimes stressful, and I know Tracy and her staff do a great job of making sure that everyone gets their stuff in on time and make sure that everything's correct and done. And just like tonight, when, if, and when you do have questions, they're always there with the answers and able to help you. So I appreciate the help, even though I've been through this a lot. I still need the help, and I appreciate all the assistance you and your team, you and your staff provide us, so thanks.
We're happy to do it, yes.
For sure, I was like, oh, just call Tracy when people ask any questions. I don't know, ask her. They know the real information. Okay, thank you. Well, I'd be happy to consider a motion.
Yeah, I would make that motion certifying the November 21st, 2023 municipal general election results.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Ritchie, second by Board Member Hire to certify the election results. This is a voice vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and congratulations to Mayor-elect Nadolsky. And I see Councilmember-elect Graff right over there, too. And, of course, Councilmember Hire, thank you. I mean, I knew it was a nail biter for you.
It was tough, yeah.
But I must say something that people really support your service, that you ran unopposed, so.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Let's start signing this and send it down the road here. Come on to you. Okay, let's let us know when we're ready to. Janine, should we just mention that there will be a what is that, a ceremony on January 2nd at, is it 12 o'clock? For the new council members?
Yes, that's right.
And the returning council members?
What time is that again?
I believe it's 12 o'clock. Put on your calendar. All set? Okay, great, well, welcome, everyone, to the City Council, the Ogden City Council meeting of December 5th, 2023. Please let the record reflect that all council members are present with Councilmember Nadolsky online. Would you like to say hello?
Good evening, everyone.
And any acknowledgements this evening? I would love to acknowledge, we had such a wonderful time at the Electric Light Parade a couple weeks ago. It was a little chilly, I have to say, I wish it would have been the week later, but it was so fun to be part of that celebration and huge crowds out there, even though it was freezing cold. And then lots of us were there to welcome everyone on the stage, so it was really fun.
I would just make a quick acknowledgement. I think we're planning to do something a little more formal, but anytime there's successes in the community, it's always exciting. And the Weber State Women's Volleyball Team won the Big Sky Championship, so that's awesome. So kudos to them and that program.
That's great. Oh, and also, I was just going to mention, isn't it wonderful that we are on the priority list for the Olympics in 2034 for Salt Lake City? So that'll be really fun, too. I remember back when the Olympics were here in 2002, my daughter had just been born, and we were in Brooklyn, living in a little tiny apartment, just, you know, in the wintertime, just in the house with her, and just watching all of the Salt Lake Olympics from there. Never in my wildest dreams would I believe that I would be living here the next time it comes, so. Very cool. Great, well, now we have some minutes to approve. So we have the joint work session of February 2nd, 2023. Councilmember Blair?
Yes, thank you. I have reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate.
And the joint work session of April 4th, 2023. Councilmember Hire?
Yes, Chair, I've reviewed those, and they are accurate to the best of my recollection.
And the joint work session of April 11th, 2023. Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, Chair, the minutes are accurate to the best of my recollection.
And the work session of May 2nd, 2023. Councilmember White?
Yes, Chair, those minutes are accurate to the best of my recollection, and I motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion by Councilmember White, a second by Councilmember Lopez to approve the minutes. This is a voice vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, thank you, Councilmember Nadolsky. And now we have a public hearing. And we invite Barton Briarly, our planning manager, to talk with us about the proposed street vacation of the northern portion of Third Street between Porter and Jefferson Avenue.
Hey, good evening, Chair Traburka. This is a request to vacate a portion of a street, Third Street. So the area is between Porter Avenue and Jefferson Avenue. So the site abuts what was formerly a church. And Third Street in this area is sort of interesting. There was actually a, the church-owned property both north of Third Street and a little strip south of Third Street. And they had a parking lot that was in Third Street right-of-way itself. So the church has since been, the church property's since been sold, and Mr. Steve Diamond's purchased that, and is proposing to develop as a subdivision. And they're proposing to realign the street by vacating a portion of Third Street and then dedicating a portion of Third Street. So basically, moving Third Street down. So here's the, another aerial of that. You can see what he's proposed, he will be proposing, he hasn't proposed yet, but to divide the property for single-family development. And then the area in yellow there, he's proposing to vacate and then move the Third Street to the south. Here's just an aerial photo, or a street view of what Third Street looks like. And here are the engineering drawings of that. The current conditions, there's actually a jog in Third Street, and this would align it more with how a vehicle would travel. It was a little more direct. There is a utility issue in that there is an existing line irrigation canal at the southwest corner of Jefferson and Third Street. And as part of the project, the developer will require to realign that because that will be where the intersection would be. One of the questions the council had is how to affect properties to the south. So there would be, there are two properties just to the south of Third Street that they have between them now, this strip of kind of unused former church property. The one to the east is, the home is still quite a long ways from Third Street, so there won't be a lot of impact on it. The one on the west actually has a driveway that's very close to that, that where the right-of-way will be, and has a carport right on there. So that would become non-conforming because that would be right-of-way there. However, the alignment actually wouldn't change the curb there very much. There'd still be that strip of land there because mostly, because on this part of the property, it's, the street is needed to stay pretty much in the same location to line up. It's really on the other end where it's going to jog over more. So the Planning Commission has reviewed this and recommends approval with some conditions. Mostly, those conditions are that the developer will be responsible for constructing that realigned street. And so they'll have to realign the street. They'll have to get approval, construction drawings, have to financial guarantee for those improvements. They'll have to get an agreement with the line irrigation company to do those improvements. So that's the Planning Commission's recommendation.
I have a question about that irrigation. So is this going to have to completely move the whole waterway over? Or just the siphons, the-
Probably just that head wall, that, yes. They probably can just reconstruct that and move it further south.
Now, I remember this particular irrigation company, you know, they've had some problems with those, you know, where the, where streets or have gone over them. Will there be an inspection prayer to that, that makes sure that this thing's still good and everything's wonderful? And because it's kind of, you know, according to ordinance, it's, the irrigation company is responsible to maintain them. And I just can kind of see that this might muddy all that water issue if it doesn't get resolved ahead of that. And I see Steve back there kind of doing a little head nod, but maybe he'll respond to that.
Yeah, you'll have double inspections. So you'll have, city engineering will inspect the city improvements there. So they'll be looking at it. And they're required to have an agreement with the line irrigation company, which would involve their inspection and that sign off on it, so it'll be-
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And would you like to hear from the petitioner?
I would love to.
Yeah, come on up.
So you put back, you like the second slide, I think, that you showed. Keep going.
Do you mind introducing yourself?
Oh, Steve Diamond, I am 5D Development, that's what names on this project. I will go to the aerial one, next one. Okay, so we've been working on this project since February of this year, trying to get it to this point. And in my opinion, you can see that most likely, this was a mistake way back 60 years ago when the church was built. They had no need for that 25 feet on the south side. And you can see where Third Street from Jefferson, east of Jefferson, lines right up through there. The church has been using it for the last 60 years as a parking lot, basically parking on the city's right-of-way. So when we looked at it back in January, before we bought the property and met with the city, and we're, yeah, there's got to be a way to make this work and trade it and straighten it out. Interestingly enough, though, the existing right-of-way that the city owns east of Jefferson is only 50 feet wide. The right-of-way west of Porter is only 25 feet wide, but we're going to keep a 66-foot right-of-way through this block, basically, even with the trade. The city-owned right-of-way will still stay 66 feet wide, which is what they have now. It's just been a parking lot instead of a road. The actual traveled surface doesn't change hardly at all. As part of the subdivision, I would pull that existing curb, move it down to basically right where the blue line and the yellow lines meet is where the new curb will go. And so the actual existing asphalt traveled surface doesn't change much, but the right-of-way is what's changing, the lines on the map. I do have a letter for you from line irrigation. They've given me the letter saying that they're okay with it. We've designed that head wall, and basically, it just moves 14 feet to the south. So it'll be the exact same type of structure. They don't think we can reuse the current structure. It will probably crumble when we, if we tried to just slide it, so we'll build another structure exactly like it, put it in the ground 14 feet, put in another piece of pipe, and then it would become theirs to maintain from then on out. It technically, it travels all the way along the Jefferson Underground. I guess the church buried it 25 years ago. It used to be an above-ground ditch the whole way, but the church buried it a long time ago, but.
They're probably overjoyed with you then, aren't they, line irrigation?
Well, he has no problem with me moving that head gate. They have not cleaned out that pipe in the 25 years it's been buried. But there's only six water users that continue to use that ditch. And so, you know, as the years pass, eventually, I would expect that that ditch will be obsolete. But they do need to maintain it now because there are still six active water users. It doesn't carry a whole lot of water, but it doesn't need to anymore. It's actually a 36-inch pipe, but it probably only has 18-inch worth of water flowing through it, so. Anyway, I don't, it was originally, I didn't feel like I should have to improve all of Third Street where we're just making that trade and could do everything on the north side, and the city could do whatever they wanted on the south side. But engineering is telling me that, no, it will be my responsibility to put in the new curb and gutter and fix the ditch and all that. So I guess that's what we'll have to do. We don't gain anything a lot for doing that, but it'll be a nice improved section of Third Street where there's nothing on either side of it. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Doesn't look like it, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, so if you'd like to comment on this item and this item alone, you'll step up to the podium and state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. And if you are on the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand. I see one hand online, that's Heath Sato.
Hello?
Hello, there you are.
Oh, there, okay. Hey, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I just wanted to clarify that they are doing this development and doing some improvements and handling a lot of stuff without being given the land or big incentives. I just, I just wanted to clarify that. It seems unusual that people will develop here under those conditions of having to do everything themselves. So kudos to them if they're doing that, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Chair, I've not seen any movement or comments online. I would make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second.
A motion by Vice Chair Ritchie, second by Councilmember Hire to close the public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, any other discussion or questions?
Chair, I, you know, that's always been a little bit of a wonky street there, and the parking lot's been kind of weird, and this makes perfect sense. I grew up in this area, so pretty intimately acquainted with it. And so I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2023-70.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Hire, a second by Councilmember Blair to adopt proposed ordinance 2023-70. And then before we do the roll call vote, I just wanted to respond, I don't believe this developer's getting any incentives from the city, correct? Correct.
Probably bought private property and is doing a development, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolsky?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie?
Aye.
Chair Traburka?
Aye, and that passes. Thank you so much for your time and effort on that development. Okay. Up next, we have an opportunity for public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council on any concerns or ideas on any topic. You'll step up to the podium, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Or if you're online on the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand. I'm not seeing any movement here, I don't see any hands online, and so. Oh, there we go. Angel Castillo.
Good evening, Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you so much. Congratulations to Mayor like Nadolsky. Looking forward to the changes that are going to be brought. And I would like to ask City Council, because I haven't heard anything in work session being discussed, about what we're going to be doing for Code Blue and temperature drops with regards to those experiencing homelessness. The last couple of years, it always seems that we have been hit with a big temperature drop. We've had people die. And I'd really like to know what the council and the administration is doing to plan for that this year. We get freezing temperatures and snow every year, and we are not yet at functional zero. So I see this as a problem that we should be being a little more proactive with. I would also like to thank the City Council for making sure, the last work session and this work session, really digging into and reaching out to people that are in the industry and have spent a lot of time in the space of looking at how things the market has changed radically. And I was very impressed with the quality of people that were brought in to speak. And I would like to know whether or not you all will be doing follow-up sessions with those folks, because a lot was impacted in those meetings. But again, congratulations and thank you for really committing to educating yourselves and hearing what's happening in this ever-changing landscape. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Any other comments? Okay, I'm not sure if the administration would like to comment about Code Blue, or if you want me to do it.
I can just say that it's administered by the state issues, the Code Blue, and it is distributed countywide. So Ogden officials are the recipient of that notice when the temperature drops according to state law. And we do have some new guidance. Again, those changes were adopted in the last legislative session, and so we're prohibited from collecting materials, you know, certain things, campsites and things like that. But we also keep in close communication with the shelter and make sure that there's beds available and take individuals to shelter when they are identified and need to go someplace warm. So it's a very coordinated effort, but it's now being basically administered by the county after receiving notification from the state.
Thank you, and I heard a lot about those plans at the Lantern House board meeting, but I think there was an article in the paper, I think it was the Standard, two or three weeks ago, that talked about the efforts of the city partnering with Lantern House and the activities that our law enforcement do to do outreach on the street when we have the Code Blue, to try to encourage people and even transport them to the shelter if they're willing to go and do that outreach. So I appreciate that. So I appreciate that. Any other comments from administration?
No further comments, thank you.
And council members?
I would just offer again also a, a congratulations to those who were, who ran for office and those who were elected. And it was a little bit stress-inducing to see the signs go out and then, but also nice to know that I didn't have to do that this time around. But anyway, congratulations. It does take a lot of effort and, and putting yourself out there and, yeah, so, yep.
Agreed. Okay, great. And up next, we're going to consider going into a closed session.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we adjourn into a closed session for one of the items listed.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hire, a second by Vice Chair Ritchie to go into the closed session. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolsky?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie?
Aye.
Chair Traburka?
Aye, and that passes. And then just so everyone's aware, I don't believe we'll be coming back into this public session. So if you're online on the Zoom meeting, you can leave the meeting of your own accord, or in a few minutes you'll be removed from the meeting as we move into closed session. Thanks, everyone, for your attendance and support.